I'm Dana Russell with Cocapelli Real Estate and Property Management, and this is the Cocapelli Connection, where we discuss the history, happenings, and lifestyle of Western Colorado. On this episode of the Cocapelli Connection, we spoke with Mesa County School Board candidate Vicki Woods. Vicki told us about her long career as a teacher, administrator, and principal within School District 51, and why she now wants to run for school board. Vicki discussed the problems facing the district, including declining enrollment, behavioral issues in the classroom, and how the district needs to build a stronger academic foundation for students. Let's dive in. Vicki, thank you for being here with us today. Tell us who you are and why we're going to sit down and talk with you.
Yes, well, I am Vicki Woods, and I'm running for the school board, excited to be doing that. And I'm coming from District E seat.
Okay, and tell us, who is your opponent? And what part of the town, what part of city?
Sure, yes, Angela Lima is my opponent. She's the incumbent. And it starts about, I'm not sure the exact, but it's around 31 or 31 and a half Road East. So that whole district is what we represent coming out of that area.
Okay, perfect. So what made you want to run for school board?
Yeah, yeah, you know, it's kind of an easy one. It's been truly my life's passion to work with children in this community. And running for the school board just allows me to continue that work in a meaningful, different way, but in a meaningful way. And, you know, over my 30-year career in education, I worked as a classroom teacher, district leader, where I supported schools across the valley to serve students with disabilities. And then my last seven years as building principal. So that really helped me to understand. I have a deep understanding of the kind of the complexities of school systems. You know, I've had the opportunity to work with a variety of budgets, from school budgets to, at the district level, I did more with federal dollars and state grants. So there's, and I cannot truly remember a time that we didn't have tight budgets. So I feel the impact of limited, our limited state budget. But it's always been that way. So you work within what you have. You know, you look very carefully at the expenses. You understand what your revenues are, and that changes from year to year. I've had to make difficult decisions of cutting staff. That's not fun. But, you know, I've just, as a leader, I just worked very closely with the staff that I had. So whether it was working at the district level, where I had more special services providers that were certainly hard to fill. But you're always looking at ways to be as efficient as possible, but still make sure that we're meeting kids' needs. And, you know, at the school, school level, it was having teams of teachers, you know, being really transparent with them about your budget and expenses that you have. And how can we do this work in a way that still allows kids to get the best that we can, given the money? So, you know, that experience has been good. I have very high expectations for myself and staff that I work with. So I would say people, you know, now that I've been doing this campaign, you know, you ask people, you know, what stood out to you as a leader? And they just said, no, I always knew what our goals were. We knew the work to be done. And there was just no getting around that if we had a goal set for our kids, that we, we made it happen. So I think, you know, just having that experience is tremendously helpful to be someone on a school board that has that. There's no one right now that has that. I don't think anyone else can claim that, that kind of, kind of in-depth understanding about education. And then equally as important, my husband and I raised both of our kids in the Grand Valley. We've always lived here. They both attended and graduated from schools in District 51. And there were times when we needed to have a hard conversation with a teacher or a school principal because we had a concern. But, you know, I just have always felt that's the kind of honest dialogue that you need to have. That's what builds strong schools, is that partnership.
Yep.
So, yeah, I, I represent this community. And I feel like we really need to have someone. And then the last is such a passion for truly preparing our kids for beyond schools. You know, it's such a short time, I'm sure as you all feel. It goes by quickly, and you just want to make sure that our kids are ready to move on. And it's a partnership. It's not just schools doing that. But as a parent, I knew I needed help with that, especially as they get into middle school and high school. They're thinking about their interests and what their potential is. I remember graduating and not really sure what I wanted to do. I started out in accounting because I love math and I love numbers. And, you know, I love budgets, as strange as that seems. But so, but then, you know, you just find your way. And I feel like we could do, can do a better job at preparing kids. And that way, it can start in elementary school. And I have lots of thoughts about how that can be done. So, yeah, I think just that strong vision for what a top-performing school system should look like. So, yeah, experience and, you know, our, I am part of this community, and I represent this community. And then just a vision for what it can be.
What do you feel the school board is doing right? With the current board and their, their time that they've served, what are they doing right for the district?
Sure, so, you know, I feel like they certainly have learned a lot since they've been there, and I've heard them say that, that, you know, the learning curve was steep, and, you know, they've hung in there. I think anyone that serves our community in that respect is admirable to do. Because it is time.
Yes.
You know, away from your busy lives, for sure. So, you know, I think they've, it seems to be they do their work in studying what's coming up on the minutes. And I noticed as I've been reviewing things these last, especially these last few weeks, they've been doing a lot of updates in policies in a variety of areas that were needed. Some of those policies, just I remember working, needed some updating. There's a lot of, excuse me, a lot of board policy. So I think they've really kept to that. During their tenure, there was a passing of the bond and mill levy override, which is no small feat to do. So that's, you know, offered and provided some really needed resources and supports. Yeah, so I would say those are some great things that have happened.
Okay, where do you see the board, the current board needs improvement? And where do you see yourself fitting in with some of those improvements?
Sure, you know, the, the increases in student achievement are always needed. I mean, you're never not working on growth and achievement.
Right.
Never. I mean, you're always thinking about how we can do better. And from year to year, you're looking at groups of kids that aren't, you know, that were not closing the gap, so some kids are doing well.
And the district has their top-performing year this year, correct? With the highest amount of graduates as well?
Yes, yep, yep. So, and I like to put that in perspective. So, yes, those are celebrations, and our teachers, and our school leaders, and our kids should feel very good about making those gains. You know, that improvement really started in 2017 at the passing of the mill at that time. So I was still working, I remember that well because I was still working as a building principal. And one of the big challenges of a district this size, so we're 11th largest in the state, which just means that to implement projects and programs across the district, it's, it's tricky to do that. Rather, when you have a small group, then implementing a new curriculum, or a new program, or trainings, it's much easier when it's smaller. And when it's large, it just takes a different kind of strategy. So the passing of the 2017 allowed the purchase of a new reading curriculum, which is such foundational work for a school system. And that allowed the district to purchase a curriculum that every school could use. So before that, we all had some old curriculum, some newer. That means your training across the district is not consistent. So that allowed the district to, you know, curriculum and instruction and the, and the work in the schools to have consistent training and support for teachers to implement. So you could see, you can go back and see the incremental steps. So that's tremendous. And you're always budgeting for the next adoption because 10 years later, or sometimes even five to eight years later, you really need to upgrade books that you're using, and sometimes strategies, your instructional strategies. So that was good, but that still puts us at mid-range for like-sized districts.
Okay.
So you can kind of think of that as we're, we're, we're average. And so we were below average, and now we're at average. And we need to be above average, and we need to be much farther beyond that. And I know district staff absolutely wants that to happen. But, so the trajectory is, we, we have got to always be talking about, how are we going to get to that next level? And they've made, even, you know, the SAT scores, you know, we're a few points above state, which state is average, right? They always tell you what the average is. So just thinking about, how do we make that next huge leap? And we should be talking about that right now. Like, what will that look like? What's the plan with our curriculum instruction we have? I'm, I'm really impressed with the work Brian does and their team. I think they have a really strong team. So I think that can happen. Some other things that are missing, we have an enormously high chronic attendance rate. So that's at 37% right now, which is 10 percentage points above state. There could be a number of different reasons why it's that high, but we need to be talking about that. And what is the plan? Looking at trends, talking with school staff about what's happening, and how do we support that? So it needs to be in the strategic plan also. And then the other piece that feels very concerning to me is the number of more significant behaviors in schools across the valley. Not every school, but it's, it's strong enough and as much of an issue that the teachers brought that to the negotiations table that the board is not sitting at. But, you know, I'm sure the information got from the person that is there, which is the school's, school district's attorney. So, and we're not talking about that. What is the plan for that? You know, being on a campaign trail, you have the opportunity to talk to many families and other community members. And there's a handful of families that say, I left our, our school, district school because of behaviors, and I'm attending other schools outside of the district. So that's a big need, and we need to have a plan for that.
What do you feel is the, is the biggest reason people are leaving the district?
Yeah, well, that is such a great question. I think it's a variety of things, you know, and it's sort of two-fold. So school enrollment is declining. And it is because birth rates are different. You know, I think of my own two, my own son and daughter-in-law who waited later than we did to have kids. And so there's a gap there, and there's certainly plenty of good data that shows that's happening. And I, we're just in a different time than when we went to school that we have lots of options and choices. And as a district, we need to meet that. So the, the traditional school work that has been done for many, many, many years, for, it's, seems to be very difficult to change that. But it needs to be changed. I believe in school, in, in choice and having school choice. My husband and I both chose two different elementary schools for our kids because they were just very different learners. And we were fortunate to have an option in the district. And I, we need to just have more of those options. So I think it's, it is choice. I think families are saying, you know, this is the way I want to see, this is the kind of school environment I want my student to be in. This is the kind of learner they are. And we're pretty limited. We are limited in our district. So we've started some of that. We have, you know, Dual Immersion Academy, but I think it needs to be K-12. Right now, it's K-8. We have the IB program in, that's been in Palisade, and now it's moving into middle school and elementary school. So that's another strand or pathway. I'm not sure what they'll end up calling that. And then STEM learning, which is engineering, which has been at Central High School. And they, I know Zeb Hayward that's there is working on strengthening that. And we have it in spots. We had that at Orchard Avenue Elementary when we were, when I was there. I know it's at Toph, and, and I think there's other elementary schools dabbling, but nothing in middle school. And there's more than that. You know, doing just innovative kinds of, of projects within the school district is exciting. You know, it's exciting for families, and it's exciting for kids. But I do think that we just need to have more choices, and families look elsewhere when we don't.
On the campaign trail, I'm sure you're talking to lots of people. What are the biggest concerns that people have brought up to you during, during your visits with them?
Yeah, so, gosh, great, great question. I haven't had that one specifically. But, you know, the first that comes to mind, I guess, that feels most concerning is families that I've known that have left schools because of what's happening in classrooms and just feeling like it's chaotic and it's unsafe. And how far-reaching that is. You know, I want to preface that with, I, I could easily name four families, which seems like a lot to me, just in the short time. This is just in a few weeks. So that would be a theme. The other, and of course, they know that I'm running against an incumbent. So sometimes it comes up that, that if, they feel that the board is, that there's just division. When you watch board meetings, which I've watched, you know, many, especially over this last year, yeah, it just feels like they're not a team. And I've just heard those comments too. You know, they feel like it's more partisan issues. And just hearing that we just want to get back to just teaching. You know, we want to get back to the business of schools. I would say those are probably the two sort of big themes. And then there's other things of just more, yeah. I, I sort of get the same questions, which is great. You know, just how do you feel about school closures? And, you know, how do you feel about charter schools? And, but not necessarily a theme. I think it's just more of where I stand on it. And then probably the last that I do hear is just the distraction of the, the conflict between the Teachers Association and the board. And I, that's come up several times about, you know, how do you feel about that? And, you know, I always say, the sad thing is we're talking about that and not about our students' success in our schools. So, yeah, it's a distraction, and we need to figure it out.
Do you feel like the union, though, plays into effect in the student's success? Like, is there correlation?
Yeah, yeah, so, great question. I, yeah, I feel like I see that pretty clearly. So as an administrator, and certainly having been a teacher for my, in my early years of working in the school district, it really is so simple that it's just about good teachers and strong teachers. There is a direct correlation in student achievement. It is by far the most significant factor, is having strong teachers. So however, you know, there's, there's mixed feelings about association, the association. I have really not thought much more about it except that I see the association as being a collective voice for teachers. So it's easy, especially in a large district, to get sort of tunnel vision. So if I just visited Wingate Elementary, and they're doing all of these really great things, and teachers are really excited about that, and they say what a great place it is to work, and they're so happy. Well, there's, you know, 23 other schools out there, elementary schools, that may not be having that same experience. So it's, you know, even just working in the district, I could see how my last converse, few conversations with teachers was great. So I don't know what everyone's complaining about, kind of thing. And an association collects information all across the district from high schools, which is very different than an elementary school, which is different than a middle school, which is different than a preschool. So it, it allows the teacher's voice to come forward and on a platform with district leaders and the school board, that these are the issues that we would like to see tackled. So it's really no more than, of course, we always want to have competitive pay, and that's really important.
Yeah.
Especially when you're a leader in a building, and you need quality teachers to interview. And so there's that piece that, you know, is an obvious, but you always have to say, so competitive pay. And then what are the supports teachers are getting? We want to make sure that our, our great, good teachers want to stay in our school district. So what do supports look like? So the Teachers Association can bring that forward each year. And I would say, in my 30 years, I do not remember a time that we couldn't have those conversations. And it's kind of been a hallmark of this school district to have such a strong association and leader, district leadership partnership. So it's too bad, you know, that, and, and they've, we've had people come here saying, how do you do that? You know, I always thought this was such this, you know, we're knocking heads. But it's not. It's really about kids. And I would say that any negotiation, whether it's in schools or out in the community and in industries, requires two very strong leaders on both sides. And I'm not sure we've had that. And so we've come to this place, and, you know, I won't get into because I wasn't there, but I think there was missteps on both sides. But it shouldn't mean that we just throw it all out and say, because I think I have seen real value in being able to come to the table. But, you know, you have to have a leader across from you with the same goal as we all do, which is kids.
So then, would you say that overall, in general, the union is very supportive of our teachers? That they, you feel that they have a supportive and helpful voice for the teachers and represent them correctly?
I do, yeah, yeah. I have not personally seen it to be any, any differently. And, you know, sometimes you'll get teachers who say, well, that's not really my main goal. But, you know, I think there's just a respect that even though it may not be an issue for me in my building, it is for other teachers in other buildings. So I feel like that camaraderie or that respect of each other. And, you know, like I said, especially high school versus maybe a different level.
Yeah. So going back to the school board and how you've had comments where some of the public doesn't feel like they're cohesive, and they don't work as a team. How do you see yourself fitting into that? Do you see yourself kind of in the middle? I mean, because at least, you know, during COVID, it, it seemed very polarized. There was conservative board members, and there is very liberal board members. And this isn't supposed to be political, but it is. And that's just the nature of it. So where do you see yourself fitting in amongst them?
Sure, you know, I feel like, it sounds kind of silly, but I, superpower, I feel like I've always had is, I can always sit down at a table and, and first start with what we have in common. And it's an easy with schools. Our commonality is students graduating successfully and having a successful school experience. So, so that's, to me, is you put that on the table. And then I'm very open. I enjoy kind of being pushed on my own thinking and, and posing things in a different way that maybe doesn't align with how I see things. It doesn't mean that I'm going to all of a sudden, you know, agree with everything you might say. But I realize that that is, having different perspectives brings very thoughtful, rich solutions to problems. So it, that's just how I see our job in life to do, whether you're in a marriage or you're at the workplace. You, you just have an issue or a problem, and you say, all right. You know, you roll your sleeves up and say, what are we going to do about this? And then being able to have a rich discussion. And I've been in many situations when I worked at Orchard Avenue Elementary. And when I came there, I followed a leader that unfortunately developed a pretty toxic relationship among staff. Had been a very strong staff, and then had kind of a different leader. And they, anyway, it was very unpleasant for some of the staff there. And one of the first things, I remember the first meeting we had as a staff, and everybody had their camps, you know, of like, well, if they just do it this way. And so I strategically set people up in groups. So you, so number one, they had to talk with each other. And it was an expectation that this is what we do. We are here for kids, not for our personal agendas. And that's exactly the way I will feel at a board meeting. And I think it's critical that when you have, whether it's a board member of five, or you have a group of 20, that every voice on that board should be heard for decision-making. That it can't be just three people that say, this is the way it's going to be because it's majority vote. And that's not listening to everyone's side. You're, you're not hearing, and, and we're there to represent our area and our, hopefully, hopefully, on a board, you have a variety of aspects from the community. It shouldn't just be all educators, and it shouldn't just be all people from the business world. It really needs to be a variety of, of people. And, and I hope to bring another perspective that's not there right now. So, yeah, we have to, we're there for kids, and we're there for the community. And we need to be able to have good, hard conversations. And it's okay to disagree. But at the end of the day, we need to remember what our goal is. And we are representing a community that has a variety of needs and outlook.
What would be your, if you were elected, what would be your biggest goal, your biggest achievement with your term on school board?
Yeah, you know, I think it's, number one is just really kind of related to what we were just talking about, is bringing a cohesive team together. So when we talk about our schools and our school board, it's not about the division. We're talking about what we're doing for kids, every conversation. So it's, a big accomplishment for me will be that, that we're having those conversations that really feels like we're all on the same page for kids. The other is, yes, you know, always being fiscally responsible. You, you have to be, you know. Whether I was at a school building, or whether I worked in the district, you, you were always worried about how you're going to, you know, pay for what you need, what you feel like you need. And, so I think having, just being approachable so that we're really clear what's happening, but also that we're out in the community, hearing from all of you on how you feel things are going, and what we need to be doing differently. So, and then I think the other, the last is, is sort of two-pronged. One is that we have a greater focus on our entire system looking at creating kids who are graduation-ready. So at the elementary school, that looks like, I always say it's professional skill, skill-building, but it's social-emotional learning, how you resolve conflicts, how you take care of yourself, how you work in teams. You know, just having a more opportunity to have real-life problem-solving at, at the elementary level. It can be done. So, and, and the difference is, is, you know, when we're trained as educators, you're trained to be you know, when we're trained as educators, you're trained to be, to learn how to teach kids to read. So maybe I'm trained as a first grade teacher or I'm trained as a seventh grade teacher. But more so having a systemic track in our schools where we're all focused on how are we preparing kids for those professional and technical skills when they graduate? So it's, it's hard to boil that down, except to say we have to get out of our individual middle school teaching, high school teaching and move into how are we working together as a team? And just seeing that in your strategic plan, you've got specific goals around that. So yes, you're always improving academics as they're doing now. And we want to move beyond average, you know, we want to be much, much farther beyond that. We need to be above average and a top performing.
So what is the, well, the school board, this past school board has gone through a lot, right? A lot of controversy, turmoil, tough topics, school closures, DEI in classrooms, those kind of things. Let's touch on some of that. Tell me your thoughts on some of the things like school closures. How do you feel DEI is implemented? Or what is your view on DEI in the classroom? How do you support parents? Because I know that's a huge thing too, that it's, it, parents do need support from a school board. So tell me kind of some of those tough topics that they've gone through. How do you, what's your take on those?
Yeah. So school closures, let's start with that one. So before I left, we, we were having declining enrollment. And that would have been probably about twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. I noticed a pretty significant decline. And, and you know, you can always go back and say hindsight's twenty twenty and if we had only known. At that time, there was, we had a number of changes and we had hired a superintendent that stayed about a year and was dismissed. And then we had an interim superintendent for, I think she was there two or three years. And then Brian was hired right at the time that I had left. We were already saying, hey, our numbers are really declining. What's our plan for this? Because you can start seeing, you know, one classroom, you have seventeen kids, another one, you have twenty-eight. And those are kind of typical things that you see just being a school leader. And you figure that out as a team in the building. Okay, guys, do we, you know, sometimes we'd combine, maybe do a three, four combination or. So you do those things and it got, I feel like it got in front of us and we were not, we were not where we needed to be. And then we had some new board members coming in also. So, yeah, mistakes were made along the way, but you just say, how, what will we do going forward? And I feel like, yep, they've made some missteps, but we're moving on. And you know, you're always, when I think of school closures, I kind of think of two areas. One is our fiscal responsibility to our district community. And the other is the importance of having quality schools across the district for every family. It doesn't make it any easier when you have to leave a school that you've loved and, but we should have quality education for, for every. So, you know, now they've put in a process of being transparent. Of course, that's always important to do that. Make sure you're ahead of it. You're reviewing every month where your enrollment is at, not just with your district community or your school community, but with the community at large. Making sure parents are really aware where the enrollment is, is, should we, you know, are we concerned about that and what will that look like? A piece that I'm concerned about, that I'm not hearing a lot of conversation about. Now that schools have been closed and there's kids in receiving schools, two of those elementary schools were on priority improvement and one of them for eight years had issues for eight years. And that was Nizley Elementary. So if you just think that means that there were, there are kids. So let's say there's four hundred kids in that school and they're split between two new schools, for the most part. There might be a third in there. Those receiving school have just received kids that many kids are far below grade level expectations. And that's a huge impact on the receiving school. So you have a school that's, might be performance and you're receiving kids that are far below, not their fault. So what are we doing about that? You know, what does the support look like? Not only are kids coming in.
Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you out. I knew that we could probably hear her. Okay, we'll pick back up. Okay.
So yeah, so the, so what's happened then, I mean, you can see, you don't have to be an educator now to see that a school is receiving, as we should be doing that. We should be taking those in. And I know the receiving schools have been really great with families that had to be displaced and some families are not happy and some are, are happy. And staff is, you know, so it's just a lot of emotional. So you start with being really empathetic to where they're at, but saying, we're here for kids. So this is about making sure kids are successful. But I really want to know what support looks like for the receiving schools, for both the staff and the kids and the families that are there that are far below. Because I might surmise that they may struggle with their performance at the end of this year because they'll be doing state assessments in the spring. And we don't have kids that were at the same levels they were when that school left at the end of the year. So as far as school closures, the other that I, because I've thought a lot about that too is, so we know as a valley, you know, our demographers said, we're gonna see declining enrollment for the next few years. It, it really isn't changing. So I just feel like strong leadership gets in front of it and says, alright. We know, let's project what it's gonna look like in maybe five years. What should the district look like? What could it look like? Maybe we're not picking specific schools to close, but maybe we are. Maybe we're saying, where are the pockets of? I would, I would ask our demographer that and other smart people in the valley that are in real estate. And, and just bringing a community group together that starts looking at what that should look like and planning now. So that we have more of a roadmap of what we could be looking to and maybe some things that we could put in place to lessen the blow of what it's gonna feel like anyway. And then the other, you know, I've had people, I, you know, kind of in a, in a business model is, well, how do we get more kids? Well, you, you need to be a really great school district, you know, people need to want to come here. And we certainly don't need to be losing families for some of the things that we talked about. Families leaving because of behavior, teachers leaving because of behavior. So we, we need to get our house in order and start really projecting more of a vision for being a great school district with pathways of different options. Yeah. Strengthening our, preparing kids for graduation in elementary school through middle school. So yeah, a strategic plan is great and it, and you absolutely should have one for the next three to five years. But it needs to even be like, what, what, what does our community feel that a top performing school district should look like? And if we don't know, then we need to start looking at what we think that might be and exploring that.
So do you feel like the current board, do you feel like they made appropriate decisions to close schools? Do you feel like that was a choice that they were forced into? Tell me kind of your thoughts on that.
I don't think they had a choice. I, I think that's what we have to do because whether we like it or not, we have to be fiscally responsible to the dollars we have. And you just, it's expensive to operate a school. And when you have seats not filled, I'm, I know that firsthand. Your efficiency in a school is not there. You have either not enough staff to cover certain aspects. You still have playgrounds to supervise. You still have to have your, your nutrition program operational. You have custodial staff and if they don't have a full building here, but it's, and, and it's across, it's just not efficient use of resources. So yeah, I think we, that, that's where we're headed. And we just, we don't have the school funding. You get dollars for every student you have in a seat in our district and the dollars are not the same. But you're still funding a full school with empty seats. So I think it's not too hard to figure out that it can't happen.
Yeah. Talk to me about a little, a little bit about behavior issues, DEI in the classroom, some more of the political stuff that we're seeing within the district.
And if I, if you could clarify for me what DEI means to you and sort of what you're referring to with that.
Yeah, certainly. So some of, you know, parents have concerns about more of the liberal agenda being pushed through the classroom where, you know, we're seeing some of the transgender, that kind of stuff where flags or posters are in classrooms that probably shouldn't be there. There's, you know, the whole, I feel like the whole TikTok furry trends playing within the school. Talk to me about that.
Okay, sure. I'm gonna ta- tackle that one and then I'll do behavior. So, so the whole concept or idea of DEI, and that's equity education, right? I, you know, I just have to go back to my own grounding of as a public school system, we educate every child that walks through our door. So, so that's like the base. Every child that comes to our door, we, we educate. And, and some might have greater needs that are more challenging. But we still accommodate and we do the best we can. And then I'm gonna jump to what we're required to teach in schools. So the state is the key driver on what learning happens in every school in the state of Colorado. And that's another base that you say, this is what we're required to teach. So all of our state assessments are tied to that and it measures whether we're teaching that or not. And I can tell you that there are so many learning standards. There's this many learning standards and this much time to teach. And teachers should only be focused on learning standards. And we have curriculum that is adopted by a school board. That's in the state of Colorado. That is their right and obligation to make sure that we have resources in hands that meet the learning standards and honor our community. So that goes through a pretty rigorous process. So we get these resources and then the teachers instruct. And so the, the variable, if you could think of it that way, is, is the skill set that teachers have to instruct. And there are, there, it, it is, you know, I always say, people say, well, it's not rocket science. Well, it is rocket science to teach. You know, it's not easy to teach a variety of kids with differing levels, especially when I've talked about like our receiving schools. So that's a big variety, multitude of students. So I guess what I'm saying is there isn't time to do other things, to teach other things that aren't in our curriculum or meeting our learning standards. And then, yes, your own values of your own beliefs, that's not the place. The classroom is not the place for that. So you come knowing that my job is to understand kids, understand their emotional development, understand how they learn. That's your job is to do that work. And it's also, you're, you're obligated to understand a variety of needs. So kids with maybe identified disabilities to gifted and talented, you know, those are the things that we should be focused on. And the other things that you hear on, I, I do feel like there's a lot of national politics that people try to infiltrate into our local community. And I just say, if that's happening, it shouldn't be and we should address it. But we first need to ask, is that happening? Or is this just another distraction for us instead of doing the work we need to? So hopefully I've answered the, that well. And yes, we will continue to have boys and girls bathrooms, you know. And it, and it's important as every school site is to make sure kids feel safe. And that parents feel their kids are safe. And if they don't, they should be talking to the principal or the teacher.
So on that same point of parents feeling safe, how do you feel about the cell phone policy that the district has initiated? Some parents don't like it at all because they feel like they don't have access to their child throughout the day. Or there's, I guess, they're still a child if they're a senior in high school, but they don't, you know.
I hear you.
But how do you feel about that? How do you think it's affected within the, how it's affected teachers and students within the classroom? And then from a parent's perspective, what kind of feedback are you getting?
Yeah. You know, those were concerns when I was still working as a school principal. So I'm gonna use that lens. First of all, I felt like as a school leader, and I wouldn't feel any different than a school board member, that it's our job to make sure parents feel our schools are safe. And I also understand that in society, there's lots of information that is happening across our country that is really scary. And so we need to do everything possible to make sure that parents understand what safety looks like in their child's school. Not in this general, but a really specific, one of the things that I did at Orchard Avenue when, because that's been going on for a while, right? We've been hearing this and we have been working on structurally making sure that our schools are safe. And that's scary in itself when families come in and it's like, why are, yeah, I'm glad we're doing this, but this feels really scary for our kids. So just being as transparent with your, your families in your school, school community as possible and saying, this is what, what we do. And here's what a lockdown drill looks like. And this is what would happen. Here's what it sounds like to our kids and here's how we manage that. But I can tell you that when we get into lockdowns, whether it's a drill or a real, and I've done both, kids are not gonna be on their cell phones during, even if they had access. Everything is, you know, if, if that's what families feel most concerned about. So just, just talking through those things. And I think really listening to families and kind of leaning in and saying, tell me what feels scary to you or what, what is making you feel like you need access to that? So, yeah, you don't want to say, no, you can't have access. But what we can say is that if you need to get in touch with your child at any time in the day, you call our school and we will make sure. One of the frustrations that I had was the, you never could get a real person. Like you'd call and you always get, you know, dial three if you want attendance and dial, you know, and so to me, those are things that we can help to ensure families. Cause I've been on the other end and it feels like, well, I just wanna, I just need to get my student or I just need to get my child. So I'm sorry, I'm diverting a little, but those are things that you just have to pay attention to. And so the cell phone policy on the, on student health and wellness, I'm really glad that Brian put that forward and made that happen in the school district. Kids are too often on screens and not with people. And that's a huge detriment to our children. I saw it in my kids, not as much as maybe it is today, but I felt the same way. And, you know, you make decisions as families, what's important and how much screen time. I'm even not a proponent of us using computers in the, in the classrooms. I always said, I should not walk in a classroom and see all of these kids on computers. Unless they're doing some kind of project where they need to do some research or do. But the, the teacher is the teacher, not the computer. And so just all of those, just screen time, whether it's cell phone or not. But yeah, I think we listen to families to make sure they know what's happening in schools and they're feeling safe and good about the work that we're doing to keep kids safe. So you listen, but yeah, I'm not. So you listen, um, but yeah, I'm not, I think that it was good that we don't have as much.
Good. Can you send Chelsea a message and just let her know she needs to do Little Park? Thank you. So you had mentioned a couple of times about behavior issues within schools in the district. How are those handled?
Yeah, um, so what should happen in uh,
And I guess, can you clarify, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, but can you clarify for me too? What behavior issues are you referring to? Is it more of a, an argument, is it disagreements? Or is it truly more violence, that kind of behavior?
Yeah, uh, it's probably both. And, and I um, right now it's the noise about there's behaviors. And, and if you hear that with, from one family, you kind of say, oh yeah, well, make sure you talk with the principal. It's not okay that your child is coming home. And that's what, what they talk about in their day is what happened in the classroom around, you know, behaviors of other kids. But when you hear it consistently over a few days or um, through other people, you know, when it's a conversation that makes it feel like it's bigger than, or we have teachers leaving because it feels like it's untenable. That's when there needs to be a specific actionable plan of identifying, identifying what the issues are, how big it is or small and what we're doing about it. What's the plan?
I feel like a teacher leaving because of a behavior issue, that says a lot.
It does say a lot. Yep, yep. So we should be doing exit interviews with teachers. That's information that should be gone to the board also. I mean, I, I'm not, as a school board member, you're not in the day-to-day operations. But when you're out, you're a representative of the community and that's what you're hearing, then you, you need to understand what's happening and what we're doing about it as a school system. So uh, yeah, any be, any strong system for a school is, it starts with teachers having a really solid classroom management plan in place, really specific. So as a school leader, I had every teacher give me what their plan was so I could support their plan. And if I saw things as a leader that maybe wasn't in place or it didn't fit with sort of our mission in our school, then I would, as a leader, I'm responsible to meet with that teacher and say, this looks great, but here's some things I want you to consider or change or whatever. And so that system, uh, and there's always a plan where um, if kids go beyond your classroom system. So you've given them whatever structure you have and, and they're not following your directions, then it's the leader's job to support the teacher. So that means I'm coming to get kids and support whatever. And you know, over time, the first time or two, um, I always say, teachers need to be letting families know, not because you have a bad kid, but because here's what we're working on in school. If you could support me in that and home, that would be great and you're doing a plan together. Um, and if it happens often, um, and things are not changing, and sometimes I would feel like I'm not getting the support I need from families to help, um, you have suspension. And it's not an intervention. It doesn't change the behavior of the child except to say, we have limitations in our school. And then it can kind of hopefully not go down that road, but, because that's not what you want. You do a lot before you ever, unless it's a very hurtful, harmful behavior, then, then. But that, there is just, yeah, you just don't have tolerance for, um, I do not want kids coming home and telling their parents about all of the behaviors that happened in the classroom that's, that so. I mean, occasionally you'll have, you might have a situation where they'll like, oh my gosh, mom, you know, this happened today at school, but it shouldn't be every day. And it's hard on teachers, you know, uh, it's not the fun part of teaching, but it's part of it. It's, you know, it's discipline. So um, an experience or um, an opportunity I had working at the district level is I was a behavior specialist then for the district. And that meant that I would go out and support schools to develop systems of discipline structures or sometimes individual students. Well, we had um, an OCR, an Office of Civil Rights complaint that we had an over-representation of um, minorities being expelled from school, from our school district. So my job was to figure out what to do about that. So at that time, we had a state grant that was given to support, it was um, called PBIS. But um, it was a um, a grant that allowed districts to have monies to, to implement um, positive behavior systems across the district. So uh, interesting story with that, uh, we didn't get the grant. And so I drove to the Colorado Department of Education and knocked on a door, somebody that I knew worked there and I said, why didn't we get the grant? Here's the needs we have and I re, you know, anyway, long story is we ended up getting the grant and it took us about, it was about three years to implement across the district. Because the OCR complaint, it wasn't just from one school, it was just a, you know, it was a pattern of, of us um, expelling kids. So that's just an example though, it can be done where you say here, then you're really looking at across the schools that they have to have certain structures in place in their school to show that they have systems to prevent um, these behaviors that are happening. So it gives supports to the teachers, it makes kids feel safer in classrooms. And then we had um, a couple of ways to assess that to make sure that it was implemented over time. And then I guess I left, you know, after a few years, it was, it stayed in place through those years that I was there. It's probably about maybe, I was there 11 years. And then when I went into um, principal at Orchard Avenue Elementary, you know, as people turn over, sometimes some of those systems go away. But now I'm just saying, looks like we need a system in place across the district. And as a school board member, you're just saying, we need to, something needs to be done.
Do you feel like a, at, at least what I think of a traditional suspension of a student where they don't come to school for X number of days?
Yep.
Is that helpful? Is that effective?
Uh, no, it usually, um, I always say suspension is not an intervention, which interventions change behavior.
Yep.
And, but it, what it does say is what's important in our school systems is that kids are safe and staff is safe. And then some, that's where your support with community agencies are really important. So sometimes you have a family situation that um, is impossible for this child to be successful in, at school. And that's where you're partnering with um, community agencies to help support family systems. And we've done, I've done a number of those. I've just done a lot of work with our community. So Colorado West Mental Health, it's not, that's not who they are now. But at that time they were Department of Human Services, where we would have um, client, uh, the counselors or therapists or staff that were working with families in the community. We just had agreements with the family, knowing that they were serving, that they would come in and support um, their kids while they were in school. So it just helped with the barriers families sometimes have um, to go out and get, whether it's transportation and then we had kids not missing school as much to make sure they access supports. But we, you know, they still get the supports they need. So in answer to your question, um, you just have to get really creative on how you make sure you keep kids in school. But still, uh, the number one priority is to make sure that the kids that are in school are safe and staff is feeling prepared.
So switching gears a little bit, before we wrap up, what are your personal morals and values that will help you be a contributing and effective school board member?
Wow, what a great question. Um, yeah, personal.
Think on this one. I feel like those are always the tough ones.
Yeah, you know, just to be, well, you know, I think it just comes from being a parent. And I just think what I wanted for my kids. So let's see if I can like put that in my own personal values. You know, when I would send my kids to school, I wanted them to feel welcome. I want them to want to be there. I want their teachers to be kind. And I also want them to hold them to high um, expectations. They're there to do work. They're there to get their work done. And I want them to be curious and kind of be valued for, uh, you know, when I think of a classroom full or a school full of kids and just, I can just feel really excited about all their personalities and really valuing who they are. Gets into all this, you know, sort of philosophical, but you know, just like your own two kids. I have two kids that are very different in their personalities, but um, just have so much to offer. And I expect our school staff to see that same. And I think value-wise, um, is just, I am a strong believer in partnerships between families and teachers. I wanted that as a family. So if I went and I can think of times that I went to the school because, you know, my child was not doing something they should have or whatever, and I just want to be received with no judgment. But that we're gonna do this together and we're gonna hold them both to, you know, high standards. So I think it's just more the family values that I have. I don't want teachers to teach things that are not in my realm of belief. And I think as schools, it's pretty clear what our jobs are and we should not be going outside of that. And if that's happening, then it should be stopped. So yeah, I feel like I'm like any other parent that wants the same things. And I respect that people have different ideas of how maybe their child, child should be raised. I respect that. And you know, I think in a school setting, my sort of kind of ruler as a leader was, I'm not going to judge, you know, how you feel like you need to raise your child or what needs to happen, but it can't impact the other students in our, in our school. So whether it's something you're wearing or whether, um, I mean, at Orchard Avenue, we had a policy around um, what kids could wear and what was not appropriate for that age group. And yeah, sometimes I would have families say, and um, I don't agree with that or I don't. And it's just, you know, these are the policies that we have at our school. And unless it's something that it's unfair, which, you know, we, you'd spend a lot of time figuring those out because you know that you're gonna have people say, but you know, it's like, you know, shorts that couldn't be above a certain level. Just, it's just the values that we feel we want kids to have. And what people do outside of the school is certainly, um, they're prerogative to do that. But, so yeah, I'm not sure I answered your question, but I guess the only way I could do it was explain how I, um, yeah, I love kids and you know, I think I have lots of hope for our kids. And I get excited about um, them having lots of opportunities in our schools.
And so tell us when election day is?
November 4th.
November 4th?
Yes.
And just to clarify, you are District E, but voters can vote for all districts?
Correct.
It's only the candidate that has to come from a specific district?
Correct.
Okay, so District E, but you can vote for everyone and November 4th is the election day?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you so much. This was a very great conversation. I appreciate you coming in and being on this episode with us.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks.